We're looking forward to even giving thanks to work for another opportunity to meet here as a town lord and as council. Pray that you give us wisdom, guide us, what your will is, Lord, and ultimately do what's right by you and was right in the best by the residents of this town. Thank you and invite you here to be with us. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, all right, I'll call me in, Lord, and we'll start off by a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Hello, Doki, and we will allow town clerk, chief clerk to move the roll call. Would please?
Mayor George Jacob Thomas.
Here.
Council member Catherine Terry.
Here.
Council member Monica Merritt.
Yes.
Council member Ed Olkum.
Here.
And town attorney Michael Hope.
Great, we got everyone. Okay, delicious, uh, additions, deletions, changes, and approval of the agenda. Uh, I only have one that I think you should add, which is just basically the town planner put in, his firm put in their thirty day notice. So, everyone.
So, I'm gonna be number six?
Yeah, just a, kinda get noticed, so, yeah.
The guy we've never seen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he ever, yeah.
Never seen him.
I've never seen him, no, not in my memory.
Ah, we're not bad, I'm just trying to connect.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yes, thank you, please. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
I'm gonna commission to approve the agenda with the shooting one change.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Has it?
Okay, I'll finish that.
Um.
I'll oppose a name. Doki. And the main, they, the main street, they submitted their lease here shortly before the meeting, but we can just consider that at the next. Be pretty short, easy, but give us some time, so take a look at it. Uh, okay, approval of the meeting minutes, this is gonna be the special meeting for March third and approval of the minutes for March seventeenth. And I think the clerk, assistant clerk and the clerk actually had another two ready, but they didn't make it onto the packet, so we'll take a look at those in the next, uh, May fifteenth meeting.
I don't see the, I don't see what she called you earlier.
Yeah, that is.
Make it right, that was the case, I'm sure.
I don't see it.
Oh, I, uh, oh, yeah, that's in the special meeting. Oh, am I being, uh, new business, wait, what's? Is that, seventeen?
Seventeen.
Oh, it's on the, uh, third. It's right above that, too.
I have to go in for a motion?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I just wanna be in by any minute.
I have a motion to approve those sets of minutes.
Okay, there's a second, okay, I'll finish that.
I don't know.
I'll oppose a name. All right, cool. Minutes, let me show you here. Uh, okay, so on to, oh, public comments first. And Mr. Harold, I imagine you're probably gonna wanna say something, but if you want, I mean, you can do it now, but per the resolution, you'll have an opportunity later if you want. Up to you.
I don't have any, it's not.
Okay. All right, anybody else need a couple of comments? All right, so we'll move on to new business. And the first one is this request that we had discussed previously when Mrs. Aura, I forget the last thing about her.
Yeah.
Edmund, this is Edmund, uh, for her straight from the heart nonprofit to be able to use the community center. Uh, the two, what I think is the first and third Wednesday of each month, let me make sure I got that right. Yeah, the first and third Wednesdays of the month, if she's able to use the community center for her nonprofit free of the charge.
I make a motion to approve, um, straight from the heart of New Central Florida's request to use the, the, uh, on the first of the Wednesdays of the month?
Oh, starting May seventh.
Starting May seventh.
My second.
I'll finish that.
Uh.
All right, I'll oppose a name. Okay, very good. Got that one, and the second one, this one, we, you voted on the process, but this is just the actual formal resolution. And then right after this, we will move right into it.
I've got one, but, uh, I'm not sure I can, but, but, only wait, once you use your number, like five, you can't use it again, that's for sure.
For sure.
Okay.
So, there's five, so exhibit.
Well, I mean, I was just using that for example.
Yeah, yeah, so, but no, but we, you only have five, so we have five categories.
Right.
And so it's gonna be, one would be the fir-, the most important, we'll be weighted five, and four, and three.
So, whatever number ways you use is over, you can't use it again, then this process.
Exactly.
Okay.
And since we only picked the first five, it's one through five.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, but now when you score, the score is one through ten.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, okay.
I didn't get, if I wasn't bothered all the way, no.
I had to think if it were two, I wouldn't, yeah.
Okay.
But we're only doing that if there's a time.
Correct.
And then, okay.
Correct, yeah, the first one is yours. Yours is exhibit A, so we'll try it that way, we'll vote, see if we can get a consensus, and if not, bam, if it comes to it, we'll do the tiebreaker. Yep.
All right.
All right, so, we'll need a motion here to approve this resolution twenty-five oh five. And then we'll jump into the actual process once this gets approved.
Where is the? I don't see, I heard you say the number just then, but I don't see it.
Oh, it should be, I, um, keep looking back.
For, for resolution, I'm just looking on our business.
R two oh five dash oh five.
Oh, no, you're right, on the actual agenda itself, it just says appointment procedure resolution. You're right, but like if you look at either two, yeah, but.
Yeah, I understand, I just, I wasn't seeing, I was gonna make a motion, and I didn't remember the number he said.
Okay.
So, I was trying to see, was, does somebody else want to make a motion?
I just, I just wanna state that, um, Mr. Harold had updated his resume, and we all got a copy of that.
Yeah, the, I think it should be here, right?
Yeah, personally, it's in the, I didn't get it from the title, but.
Oh, is that what I think?
And I'll also say James Richardson had texted me something, oh, this night.
He's already, yeah, he's up there.
Yeah, I think, I thought.
No, this is not.
Yeah, it was sent after I sent the packet out.
Yeah, this is not.
Oh.
Yeah.
James had sent me something, but Kelly reports that he didn't turn it in to her.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know Lonnie sent the email to all, uh, did you text, did you text?
I don't know if they texted it to you or not.
Yeah, so.
Did he use it?
It isn't, okay. Yeah. But Jane, I, I didn't get an email, I don't know if he did or did not.
I just want that on the record, but I don't see any reports. He had told me he wasn't re-entering recently.
Oh, so you're saying this one, okay.
So, he doesn't need to.
He never told me to.
He had told me previously, during all the uproar, that he was not doing it again, but then late last night, he sent me something to look at, and I looked at it and didn't really converse, 'cause we're so close to voting, and, you know, it's his responsibility to get it turned in.
Kelly, when you asked him, when you reached out to him, what did he say?
Uh, he said he was gonna get me updated resume, I said, I needed it like the first, he said, okay.
I mean, he hasn't sent it yet. I mean, I said, we can just consider him, I said, we just consider him, but.
I would say so, too, just to.
Yeah. Okay, so, I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and make the motion unless anyone still needs a minute, uh, to approve resolution. R twenty-five dash oh five for the, uh, establishing appointment procedures for vacant town council seats.
That's it.
Okay, all the things, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, I'll oppose a name. All right. Exhibit A is, so we give an opportunity, but obviously, Mr. Harold's only one here, so if you wanna go ahead and.
Sure.
Make a comment.
Lonny Harold, resident, uh, address eighteen-three oh seven Southwest State Route forty-seven Fort White. Uh, I submitted a resume for the vacant town council seat. Um, I would appreciate each one of your consideration for the position. Um, I applied for the position, uh, because I feel inclined to serve as citizens for white. I'm a recent, uh, retiree, and so I have plenty of time on my hands, and I've dedicated thirty-three years of my life uh, serving the citizens of the state of Florida in many different capacities, uh, and so I just feel, um, that this would continue my work, uh, serving those. Uh, I love this community, um, I wanna see this community grow, and I wanna see it grow in a sustainable manner, uh, to keep up with the needs of the citizens, the desires of the citizens, while keeping the costs as low as possible for the citizens. Uh, taxes low, fees low, cost for utilities low, so, um, you know, I wanna see the natural resources that we have be preserved uh, for, you know, everyone to enjoy, not just the citizens of Fort White, but this, you know, citizens of the state of Florida, state visitors. Um, and my vision includes improving the government as a whole, restoring confidence in the, uh, government of Fort White Town, um, improving infrastructure and facilities, and adding, um, value to the services we offer, and adding additional services uh, to serve the citizens of this community. Um, in addition to my career serving the citizens of the state of Florida, you know, I have many, many, many years mentoring youth in Columbia County, I'm a lifelong resident, and, uh, I believe in giving back to the community that has given so much to me. And so I have coached and mentored youth from four years old up to, um, you know, middle school age. And then, uh, you know, volunteered my services for the high school program, high school football program, uh, out there, acting as a volunteer official in the chamber. So, uh, any questions you may have, you know, that we had to answer?
How many years have you lived in the residence of Fort White?
Um, since, uh, January of two thousand fourteen, so.
And that's the structure here, it's your wife already on it?
Yes.
When y'all got together, right?
Yes, sir.
The mid-black house.
That's right. Couldn't remember who's that was, but that's, I mean, now she said that, yeah, that would end that building.
So, many, for many years, I lived in a nearby community, Ellisville, um, I had a house up there in my twenties, and my children came to school here. So, I've been a part of this community for many, many years, um, you know, going back to, um, all form of children going to Fort White Middle School, High School, volunteering with programs prior to being a resident here in town limits, uh, being a parent of children going to schools here in the town, you know, I volunteered my services to these, um, community. Anything else? All right, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the next portion here is town council, this government. Uh, I guess we, one, what is it?
Oh, I got two, you got two.
In case of this tie.
I just called it, I just called you, man, that's it.
In case we did, yeah, exactly.
Maybe they told you, man, that's it, so.
Do we know why, um, Mr. Harold's the only one here? Um, I guess that matters, but.
There was a lot of people that wasn't here in the last meeting when we decided to have this special meeting, so, but, I mean.
But, um, the three candidates were called, correct?
Um.
Yes.
Kelly, when you called them, did you tell them the date of the meeting, or just asked them if they were still interested?
Uh, I told them that the resumes had to be invited by first.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I do think, I do think Dennis was here at that last meeting, since, um.
Yeah.
I do think he was here, now James was not, but.
Could it have to be here?
But, no, no.
I mean, so you could speak for him, or ask him a question.
And I'm guessing.
To show their interest, in my opinion.
Right, and I'm guessing based on the last time I spoke to Dennis, who was before, I think, before, right around the time of the last meeting, he probably didn't know that this meeting was at this time or something. I just, I think he would've been here, 'cause he's been coming to the last, quite a few, uh, council meetings, but, anyway, yeah, we got, we got. Okay, so, just, yeah, okay, all right, well, um, we can go ahead and give the first round a shot here of this, of these, I guess.
Can I ask a question?
Go.
Who are all the candidates?
Who, who are all the, so is James, who we're considering, is James Richardson, Lonny Harold, and Dennis Rivera? Okay, if everyone was done, I guess we can just carry on, come grab it. That way everyone can just hand it over to. Yeah. Don't they're doing. Yeah, just.
Watch Survivor.
What is it?
Y'all watch Survivor?
Um, let me see. Count, yeah, and then just count how many, like which, who got how many?
Two for Dennis Rivera and two for Lonny Harold.
All right, so we got one tie. I figure we'll, I think we want to win the thoughts before we do again, see if there's any discussion or anything.
Is that on the process? I thought the tiebreaker would be it.
Yeah, then we can move right to it.
You just gotta sum it up, that'd more if you do the tiebreaker.
Yeah, okay, uh, what it says, I think it's up to us, but yeah, so we can proceed, we can go right to the side.
I just got one thing to say.
Yeah.
You got one man here that showed up, and I know Dennis knew about that meeting, 'cause he was sitting right there. Okay, I, I mean, y'all voted him off there, okay, I'm just letting y'all know, that man showed up. They, nobody else cared enough to be here at this meeting.
But we don't know from the, the life of circumstance, I mean, life happens, so we just can't say that he just negligent, it didn't come him or James, and then, once again, we didn't send the dates, I mean, so.
I know he does work some meetings.
Yeah, so.
Dennis, Dennis Rivera, I know he does work some, I don't know if he work right now, but.
But I agree.
Is it not on our website? Is it not on the website that we're voting about?
It's on the.
It's on the agenda.
Somebody that's interested in it would've do, you know, that's all I'm saying, you know, you often make an excuse for Dennis, or, or James, or whatever, but if you was interested in getting that seat right there, you would be here at this meeting, or, or, or call or something.
Or maybe you wanted to avoid the commotion like last time.
Yeah, now, he, now, he also.
Maybe he did, but, you know, here to speak for himself.
Exactly, I know, and he don't have to be here.
No, he don't have to be, but it shows you how much he cares, in my opinion.
For all, for all.
I wasn't at any meeting before, I don't, I didn't, I never attended any meeting, so.
And I guess for all we know, and for all we know, he, he did know, and he could very well be working, um, I know he's on call at the meetings, too, so. Uh, go ahead, I'll log for two, and then we'll go right into the.
I was just gonna make a comment that, uh, part of the, uh, selection process is an opportunity for the board members to interview the candidates, and, uh, the candidates speak. And then another opportunity is for, uh, us citizens to ask the candidates questions, and I did have a question for Mr. Rivera, I was gonna ask him how long he has lived in Fort White, uh, because of those on his resume, he says from two thousand six to present Fort White, uh, Rivera, whatever. Uh, but, uh, property tax records show that he just, uh, purchased that house a couple of years ago, and may only live here a couple of years, so, that was my question for him. And, uh, their failure to be here, that basically robs the council and the citizens of that opportunity to, uh, ask questions to the candidates, so, that's my little comment.
I agree.
Say on here. Now, I don't think that he states that as his address, it says July two thousand eight to present operating remodeling business.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
Yeah, I don't see where it says that he's a resident there.
Right, I was just gonna ask you how long you've been a resident, because that was not clear. Uh, property records show that he purchased a house in December twenty-two, and some of his shows, he changed the address of his business in January twenty-three, so I would assume that that is when he established residences in, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, so with that.
Do you have your comments for residency?
Um, just, just that they be a resident. So, all three, all three of them are eligible, so. Yeah, and, you know, Councilman Coon, you, you were very honest and open, and you gave your thoughts, so I'll go ahead and give some of mine, too. The only person that we're considering here to fill the vacancy, who hasn't publicly blasted and threatened and accused the council, or individuals on the council, and who has shown that he wants to work together to move forward, even if it means stepping down. I don't know how many other people would've done that, the only person who also did that was Dennis Rivera, so I'll be honest, so that's why he has my vote.
You must not remember the meeting we had, 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 because, that, the senator, when he blasted me and Catherine Terry, after he stepped down.
Yeah, I mean, he, he made comments.
He said, he said, he made comments like everybody, he has made them, I mean, directly to me, and before I spoke that night, I told him, I thought, this has nothing to do with you, but with this seat, is how you was put in the seat, that's the comment I made to him before I spoke that night.
Right.
Now, he just got there another night and blasted me, and that, and that's fine, that's, I don't care what people think about me.
Right, and, you know, one thing is standing up at a town council meeting and calling out certain behavior, that's one thing. And another thing is taking it outside of council meetings. And I'll leave it at that, 'cause I don't want to get divisive, and I don't want this process to devolve, but, that, so that's where I'm coming from, and what I mean when I say that. And, and you're right, he did call people out, you know, so, but anyway, um.
Did, did, you remember that, huh?
Yeah, no, I, uh, so, there is nothing in, and I'll wait a little while.
I'll just agree with what he said, that, um, at that meeting, I was blasted, and Bill was blasted, and so that's not really a piece of team. And I wanna compliment Lonny for making the effort to update his resume and go in more depth, I mean, it's, it just sweeps every, all five categories that we have in our tiebreaker.
Yeah, and your, and your opinion is sweet.
And, and when you said in my opinion, what I was arguing about, and I said the same thing to him, it's never about Dennis Rivera, it was about the way you scored the candidates. And then we all agreed that none of us really scored it perfect, perfectly, but I, I will stand by, yours was a blatant disregard for the system.
Okay, and, and, and that's your opinion.
Yeah, we're still going backwards, we're not going backwards, we are, we just, you just voted.
And this is your.
We have a process for what happens, we just, they're talking about the same thing over and over, but we're not going backwards, it's gonna be resolved today, so.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, we go to the town.
So, for me, say one more time how we did this tiebreaker, 'cause I don't want that coming back.
So, we have the, the, you have the five criterias, each one of you will wait, which one you think is the most important, we'll get five, one through five. And then you wait accordingly, you can't put the same number for the, you can't use the same number twice, one through five, okay? And then after that, the candidates, you score them in each area, one through ten, in all the areas. So, the first one through five is your weight of what you think is the most important, and then in each candidate's lecture, marks your score in one through ten according to them.
And you're just giving your weights over here with the.
Your weight goes right there, you can't see it, it's blacked out, it's one through five, it goes right there, and then we have candidate one, who we need to decide, if it's candidate one, who decides two, and who decides three.
Hmm, candidate one, candidate two, and candidate three.
Why would there be a three?
We were gonna.
James.
He didn't.
Well, you're James.
But you.
But he just said the time.
Oh.
You're right, James.
You're right, so candidate two.
Oh, yeah.
You're saying it's like that, you wait candidate one, candidate two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is one, so we all have the same one.
So, we can make, we can make Lonny one and Dennis two.
Then if I weigh five, that's better than if I weigh one, or does it don't matter?
Right, it is, just with your.
Five.
That's your, your highest, um, weight.
Am I also multiplying?
As far as the math, we want to carry through the math or we can do it, or have a double check here or just.
Yeah, do it and just have a double check, okay?
Okay.
I need a check.
I know, right? Oh, that's wrong, that's. It's like, here, I have to double check for us.
I think we should probably sign these little score sheets.
Oh, okay.
I'm worried.
Just be ready to. Scary, if you wanna come around and get these, and you wanna do a few minute reset, like five minute reset, let her tally them up.
Yeah, wanna talk about the Spanish street piece real quick, about the question.
Discussion.
I say we wait, yes, because we tabled that for the next, or we didn't table it, but we didn't include here, so we can.
Sorry, I just have a question on that, I guess we'll sit on.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Someone add you?
But the seventy-eight sixty-three, you go to twenty-seven, it's got, when you go to Google, it pulls up the train station as an address, but when you go to property appraiser, they have it as one oh eight southwest Walker's Way, so I don't know which one you would want to use for a contract.
Walker's Way, West Side Street, isn't it, that side, you got that for you?
I think so.
Or if you want to put one slash the other, just to make it clear.
I say you use what the property appraiser.
Yeah, on Google, I said, but you put, so what'd you say, says the other one, the?
The Columbia County Property Appraiser said.
What does it say if that is what?
That one has the Walker's Way address.
But what it like, what's the number?
A one oh eight southwest Walker's Way.
I would say they use Walker's Way because there's no entrance off twenty-seven in that property.
Oh.
You gotta go, you gotta go straight beside or go in, that's why, I would say that's why the property appraiser uses it. There's no entrance off twenty-seven.
Yeah. I said we do it. We'll carry second, I'm gonna use the bathroom myself.
They use the Walker's Way.
Probably because of the one on the entrance, twenty-seven or another. So the entrance in that property from twenty-seven. Usually.
Seventy-eight sixty-three.
I'm thinking from Google, because when you Google that piece of property, it comes up that way in Google. But then when you actually look at it, it comes up the other way.
Five oh five for Harold and four forty-eight for Rivera.
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Five oh five for Harold and four forty-eight for Rivera.
Alright. So we need a.
One four one.
Four four forty-eight.
Two four three.
I think there's gotta be a motion.
You want that motion?
Go ahead.
Uh, Pleasant, what would you do except, to accept the?
Uh, you have a motion to.
Fill the seat with Mr. Harold.
To appoint the nominee to the vacancy, yeah, to fill the seat, you can just say it's here.
Make a motion that we appoint the seat of two to Mr. Harold.
Okay, there. Say, okay, alright, on for a shot.
Ah.
Alright, I'll post a name. Alright.
Congratulations, Mr. Harold.
So then it could be sworn in, actually, uh, you could pick whoever you want to swear you win with, with uh, does anyone bring an oath? It'll, it'll be. Uh.
Congratulations.
The oath is in the charter. So we print it out and then whoever you want to swear you win, unless you have any issues with, is it a matter of swearing?
No, I don't think it matters.
Okay. Okay, so that's that, uh, moving on to item number four.
Huh? Not working to the next meeting?
At the end, I think at the end of this meeting.
At the end of this meeting?
Yeah.
I I'm missing out still what you said, I thought you said next meeting.
Oh.
I think he's swearing in, but then he sits in the seat the next meeting.
Yes.
At the end of.
I'm just missing out still what you said.
Yeah, the newly appointed council member will provide the oath of office at the end of it.
Yeah.
Before we drop.
Yeah.
So don't go anywhere.
Alright. Item number four, sidewalk interlocal for Sky Avenue. There's, so the one that went in the packet is an old agreement and a new agreement. So I think everybody had that. So anyway, uh, yes, we have a project, it's a LAPP project, so I called the lady at the Department of Transportation. In order to be eligible for LAPP funding, you have to be LAPP certified, so Fort White is not LAPP certified. So we've always gone through the county, the county is LAPP certified, so we've always had interlocals with them for sidewalk projects that require LAPP funding, so. So we got two of those here, we got four and five, one for uh Sky and then the next one we'll get to here shortly. So if it would just be approved with the interlocal would be what we need to do, we want this to move forward. And the the interlocal, which is, other county senate is back there somewhere.
Which ones first?
Sky Avenue.
I'll make a motion that we approved the interlocal agreement on five, and then we get the county.
Okay, you got a second?
This is and Jordan Street.
Sky Avenue and Jordan Street, yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, all for's, all for's eye.
Ah.
Ah, I'll post a name, alright, we got that, we'll sign this and get it sent back to the county. And then item five, which is four, yeah, okay.
I have the motion to approve the interlocal agreement, Lonnie County for the municipal sidewalk project.
Got a second?
No, I'm stupid.
All for's eye.
Ah.
I'll post a name, alright, so we signed that too, we get it back, and the only other one that we added to the agenda that I did, I guess I, yeah, we did, was for the town planner, so the town, Lowell Garrett, uh well, technically the firm, EDA Consultants, but Lowell Garrett, so he, they put in there technically thirty day notice. Um, so we have until May we technically have a few days passed, we have like three business days passed, but by May twenty-third, we should have someone identified now. We don't have a meeting from now to then.
Yeah, we got one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got one.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, that's, we have a long fifteen, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is I don't know that we'll identify someone in the next two weeks to the next meeting, so worst case scenario, I'll ask them if they can give us a, I don't know, two week extension or until our next meeting. Uh, or or if not, we'll just have to call a special meeting based on who, who we got, I, their colleague, he gave us a couple of recommendations, so. Hopefully we'll get that filled.
And does that have to be advertised, or you can just call or?
I don't, I gotta check the purchasing policy, but I don't think it requires a RFP. And I'll have to check back just to make sure they do it for the policy. But yeah, but it's all, anyway, I wanted to give that notice. And council member comments. I know for special meetings, we don't seem to be doing council member comments, so.
We do, but I don't have anything.
We have, we have, I spoke about it with the attorney, we have uh a gentleman calls and he's basically submitting like noise complaints essentially against the, against the gun range, it is right next to the gun range. And I guess, what's he saying, they're shooting outside hours.
Yeah, his main concern is he wants them not to be shooting at seven in the morning and after six o'clock in the evening, so it's very disruptive to his property. That was his main complaint.
We don't, we, we have it a mile or more down, right?
We, um, we, uh, they're checking down the most recent lease agreement to see what it says.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm actually not sure what it says.
I think there's miles on it, in the lease, I'm not sure what it is.
Sunrise, sunset, something, yeah, could be.
The only other complaint I've ever heard is one time that they had a funeral down here and they didn't coordinate with each other, they had a bunch of shooting, and they was very upset during the funeral. And I, and that, and the man that does the contract agreed that they shouldn't have. But he said he claimed at the time he didn't know about, but I think that's the only time they've ever done that. The, I, I mean, I, I.
I have heard, I I have heard complaints.
Oh, I've heard complaints about it.
So that's why I'm, I, what I recommend, that if you're certain, recommend to him was, hey, just go and just get, you know, if you get a certain number of signatures, bring that before the council, and we see like, hey, it's a problem in that in that area, we can address it.
Yeah.
You know, you can, you know, walk by the hour or or whatever, so.
I would see what the lease says first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that might be, yeah, when you go to renew it or or not, or whatever you decide to do, so.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
This is under council person comments, um, playground equipment.
Oh, yeah, um, so we.
I'm a term of the smile there.
So we submit, um, did he sort of, Kelly, we submitted the initiation paperwork, did he say he'd present something at the May fifteenth meeting?
At the May fifteenth meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Then, I don't know if this is related at all, can, maybe you can answer this, or maybe you can answer this. I signed off on a pretty large check for both of the parks, and it seemed like it was a survey or something, so.
The seventeen hundred and fifty?
It's two pretty large checks.
I know we had a seventeen hundred and fifty for, that was part of the commencement paperwork, the title search and title opinion.
It was not.
I don't, I don't, that was, that was one check.
I signed two checks, one.
Okay, that's the, I, that's.
Or the paperwork, it might have been one check, but the paperwork said both of those parts.
Two invo, yes, that's right.
Does that have anything to do with the playground equipment or that?
No, 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 that, that's needed for the commencement paperwork, the state needs to see that we actually own it before they give us grant money for it.
Okay.
It's a formality, but yeah, they need to know that, yeah, the title search was done, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And then I have another comment.
Okay.
There's no budget in here, there's no profit and loss statement.
Just committed an act of, that was rude too.
Okay, and then we're gonna see that every time.
That's what we recorded. I think that's what we recorded last time. Alright, so floor's open for a motion to adjourn then.
No, we're gonna swear. We're gonna be best charged.
Who, okay.
Hold, 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 that's my ear.
Yeah.
I, I just, I'm not a council member, I had a thought that I was gonna bring up, because I was going through my calendar and putting all of the scheduled meetings on. And for the June meeting, I'm outstayed, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, see if there was a way for me to appear either via Zoom or telephonically, but in June, I'm actually gonna be in Wyoming, I'm on a date.
Okay, the sixteenth?
Yes.
And we can, we can do it now, or we can push it to the next meeting, but we could either just reschedule, yeah, just change the date.
Can we schedule a work with you on that, I think?
Uh. I'm, yeah.
I'm gonna go to state.
Because I'm trying to think, is there anything? Yeah, we'll, we can, we can probably, we can do it now, y'all, put that as an agenda item for the next meeting and then just go.
Let's do it, the next meeting.
From now to then, if something comes up, yeah, okay, we'll do that, oh, hold on, let me write that down. June, what is nineteen? No.
June is five, I guess.
No, it is, it is nineteen, right, or no, like, I don't know. Yeah, you're like six.
Mr. Thomas Michael, like, do you know where they would be at the oath, right?
It's in the charter.
Okay.
So I, I can find it and go print it out, I'll send it to him to print it out. Or actually, uh, Kelly, pull up the charter.
Yep.
And go to, I'll tell you what page, in a second. And you can print that out. On the P, on the PDF, it's page, it's section forty? Section forty, but it's page thirty-four of the PDF, that should have, have only thirty-six pages.
Thirty-six pages is page thirty-four?
Yes, do you see it?
I believe so, yes.
Section forty, oath of office, okay, yeah, go ahead, print that page out, please, if you would.
Michael, you just stepped in here and ain't got one or two long nudes yet. Man. Can't believe it.
Got it, okay. And then Mr. Harold, I can, normally I do it, but I'll let you take a pic.
I'm the honor.
All right, come up here, raise your right hand.
Aye, Lonnie here.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
May have observed the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the town of Fort White.
And ordinances of the town of Fort White.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Uh, you'll be the council member, council member for District two, Town.
Council member of District two, Town of Fort White.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Those two here. Yeah, four of them for a motion.
Just take your seat.
Yes, move.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Do y'all want your picture together?
Oh, I wonder what I took.
Y'all, okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to.
I sit.
All three's aye?
Aye.
All will say aye?
I think.
You made the one, you got it. Okay, you got it.